Live, okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call the public hearing to order. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to receive input and comments on bylaw twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four, South Bow Stage One Land Use Amendments, which is a statutory public hearing, and South Bow Stage One Neighborhood Plan Amendments, which is a non-statutory public hearing. I'm going to outline the procedures by which we'll be taking your comments tonight. Before I do, I want to confirm that the notice of this hearing was published in accordance with section six oh six and six ninety-two of the MGA administration. Yes, thank you. As you came in, you were given the opportunity to add your name to the speaker's list. We request that all in attendance who wish to make comments ensure that you're on that list. To ensure that the public hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will abide by the following rules. I'm going to initially call on the applicant to present to council on their application, and then we'll move to the speaker's list. There is no formal presentation by administration during the public hearing, as this is council's opportunity to hear directly from the applicant and affected residents. Once the applicant has completed the presentation and answered any questions from council, I will call on those on the speaker's list. When all those who have signed up to speak are done, I will ask if there's anyone in the gallery that wishes to add their name to the list for an opportunity to speak. When your name is called, please come to the microphone, face the podium here at the front by the pillar, and state your name and any group or association that you may be representing tonight. Each person will be given five minutes to make comments, ten if you are representing a group of two or more people. Excuse me. We appreciate everyone working to keep within the allotted time. Excuse me. If need be, I will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that everyone be courteous and respectful to one another. Only one speaker should be speaking at a time, ensuring you're directly in front of the microphone, as I said, so that your comments can be heard on our live stream. Speakers will not engage in dialogue with gallery members, please. And once all the public have had an opportunity to speak, council may call up the applicant for any clarifying questions. And I just want to remind everyone that there's no decisions being made tonight, as the purpose of this hearing is to hear from both the public and the applicant. So that is the preamble and all of the rules for a public hearing. So with that, I will call on the applicant to please come forward to give us your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jessica Anderson with Qualico Communities. I'm joined this evening by my colleagues at Ben Mercer and Mike Anderson, as well as the project team from StanTech, Ms. Lombardo and Mr. Patterson. I'm going to quickly turn things over to Christina or Ms. Lombardo, which shall take us through the applications this evening. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to say a quick thank you for the opportunity to present here this evening. As you're probably aware, we've begun construction in South Bow Landing. We show homes opening this past September, following a summer of grading and site preparation. The show home opening in September was actually one of the busiest Qualico has seen in recent years. The application before you is an important step for us to adjust and improve the neighborhood plan as we move forward with development in the community. Support on today's applications will allow us to continue to deliver new elements in South Cochrane in two thousand twenty-five, including our employment lands, retail amenities such as a grocer, and supporting businesses, a new off-leash dog park extending the extension of James Walker Trail, and delivery a variety of new homes as well. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to your support. And I will turn things over to Christina to walk you through the applications. But the whole project team is here if you have any questions at all. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Christina Lombardo with StanTech Consulting, and I'll be speaking on, continuing to speak on behalf of the applicant, Qualico Communities. Joined by Jessica, we thank you for the opportunity to be here, and would like to speak in support of the application to adjust the South Bow Landing Neighborhood Plan and associated land uses under proposed bylaw twenty-five slash two thousand twenty-four, and I'll answer any questions you may have. So the community of South Bow Landing is within the River Heights Area Structure Plan and is located east of Highway twenty-two and south of the existing communities of the Willows and Riverside, as well as the future summit of Riverside. This application impacts only the western half of the community, otherwise known as Stage One, and the eastern portion of the plan area will be brought forward to council at a later date. Presentations were made by administration to introduce these amendments at Committee of the Whole on November fourth and during the regular council meeting for first reading on November twelfth, prior to today's public hearing. Moving forward, we anticipate second and third reading will be held during the January thirteenth council meeting. I did want to also mention the previously reviewed multifamily application along the northern boundary, sometimes referred to as parcel A, B, and C, are not being affected through this application. And a separate engagement process was undertaken in the fall of two thousand twenty-four, where feedback from the community was incorporated into a separate application, which council can expect to see at a future meeting in early two thousand twenty-five. So this application is intended to be a minor amendment to the existing neighborhood plan, maintaining the vision and intention of the document. Adjustments proposed to the land use configurations work towards build-out of this area as we now better understand what prospective builders are looking for. So we can summarize it into roughly four items. The first being within this commercial lot here, the employment lands have been reallocated by increasing the size of the commercial parcel. Number two is in the south on this end, if you can see my mouse, yes. We have a slight reduction to the industrial lands. Number three is here with the realignment of River Heights Drive, creating space for a multi-use pathway and an off-leash dog park. And number four, located centrally in the plan, increased parks and open spaces throughout, along with minor block adjustments to the residential streets. I'll get into more detail about each of the items, but starting with the commercial lands. Number one, the commercial parcel has been increased through this amendment to allocate a parcel for a grocery store and other associated retail for residents in Southern Cochrane. There is an existing land use approval in place for a commercial lot. However, through this proposal, we have updated the mapping in the neighborhood plan to reflect this location of commercial, as well as the increased area proposed today. The western boundary of the commercial lot has also been straightened to assist in a better efficiency of building placements, as well as circulation within the parcel. If approved today, through this application, construction of this area is anticipated in two thousand twenty-five. The employment lands have been reorientated by amalgamating various parcels previously intersected by River Heights Drive and removing one seasonal wetland. The removal of this wetland was reviewed holistically within the plan and was considered to be the best configuration and outcome for the area in order to maintain employment lands. Items considered include that the southernmost wetland is a class-three, meaning it's a seasonal marsh, and it may be impacted, it also may be impacted through the future Highway twenty-two widening, completed by Alberta Transportation. The northern two wetlands that are remaining are both class-four, which are semi-permanent wetlands, and are considered to have a higher environmental function, and thus they've been retained in the plan. An application for the removal of the southernmost wetland was submitted to Alberta Environment and Parks earlier this year and has received sign-off from them. River Heights Drive is the third adjustment we're looking for today, again, building off of the previous two slides relating to the benefiting lands on the west side. An improved configuration of River Heights Drive and the utility rights of way south of James Walker Trail will result in a multi-use pathway and allocate space for an off-leash dog park. This will also further buffer any of the residential lands to the east from any industrial development. And the regional and multi-use pathway connections, as well as an off-leash dog park, are anticipated to be constructed as well in two thousand twenty-five. And finally, the last location of adjustment is within the parks lands located centrally within the community. The park has been increased by one point one-four acres, and the residential lauding at the north end of River, or sorry, James Walker Trail along here have had a slight reconfiguration to improve pedestrian connectivity and access to transit along James Walker Trail. I do want to note with that change, there is no adjustment needed to the land use. It all is remaining the same. It's just strictly the movement throughout the area and the network. So moving into our pathway improvements. Working with administration, we've improved a number of pedestrian and cycling connections throughout the community by increasing pathway sizing from two point five meters to three meters, and along James Walker Trail, four meters on both the north and south sides. This includes separated bike infrastructure constructed off of the road and pathway connections leading towards the school sites. This application also increased the overall landscaped green spaces for residents and provides an additional green connection to the Willows that was not previously considered. So that is north of James Walker Trail in this location here. The map on the screen also identifies all regional and local pathway connections that are in addition to any of the sidewalks within the residential streets. So as the question was raised during Committee of the Whole, I also wanted to mention, oh. I'll go back to that one. I also wanted to mention that we are actively looking into making an additional regional connection to Spring Bank and the community of Harmony. However, as that connection point is located within the eastern portion of the community, it would be reviewed by council through our next upcoming application, which we're calling Stage Two. This connection point is noted both within the Town of Cochrane's Open Space Master Plan and Rocky View County's Active Transportation Plan. So Qualico is excited for this opportunity to review this connection point, and you will definitely see it coming forward. So continuing on our pathway improvements on the western half of the plan, we have included some habitat enhancement and planting buffers within that commercial and employment land area. The wet pond, so we have the wetlands and the wet pond that will feature a local pathway where visitors can access from the east, north, or the west, and utilize that kind of loop to make, or like for pedestrians or for biking. Also, the off-leash dog park is connected via the pathway system and the greater network. And again, all of these pathway connections all lead towards the center of the plan area and ultimately east towards the river. Moving forward to community engagement. Upon submission of this application, administration circulated the proposal to just under one hundred residents in the area and posted the notification, posted a notification to the town's website. Additionally, the applicant also posted signage onsite summarizing the proposal, and we hosted an open house for any members of the public who were interested or had questions. We sent a notification by mail mirroring administration's circulation area, again informing just less than a hundred residents. And since then, a project website was also made public in October, which contains details for this evening's public hearings and will be updated relating to this application as we move forward. Moving into the value proposition of this application and the benefits this provides the town. We included increased connectivity throughout the area, supporting future transit connections and the construction of James Walker Trail. We have positively impacted community amenities and open space by improving pedestrian and cyclist connections, increased park spaces, and the addition of the off-leash dog park. This application also broadens the municipal tax base through the introduction of commercial and industrial developments, which will ultimately include grocery stores, banks, restaurants, office spaces, things of that nature. And this proposal will also assist in contributing to asset management costs for the town through various uses and property taxes, ultimately funding public services in town. This application also aligns with all applicable policy documents. However, I'll pull a few forward out of each of the documents to demonstrate how the application is aligned. So the existing municipal development plan, as well as the proposed envisioned Cochrane two thousand fifty documents state that there is a planned development corridor and neighborhood center in this area. This helps to realize that vision. Council's two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five strategic plan notes livability and connectivity, creating vibrant and active communities with connected neighborhoods, which we're working to achieve. The Cochrane Sustainability Plan notes that Cochrane is a complete community, and you will be close and connected, which we, again, are trying to achieve through this application. A little bit more specifically, within the River Heights Area Structure Plan, the vision intended through that document supports a range of densities, services, and amenities at appropriate locations that heighten the quality of life for residents. And the Village Center provides pedestrian-friendly atmosphere where residents can socialize and meet their daily needs, which we hope to achieve through that commercial lot and employment lands. Additionally, within our existing neighborhood plan that is approved, there is a housing principle that states facilitating placemaking and stronger communities through sub-neighborhoods. We feel that this area is a sub-neighborhood that we would really like to see realized through this application. So in summary, this application is aligned with all policy documents, has received support from administration, and has also received limited feedback from the community. The project team looks forward to council support with these minor amendments so we can continue to deliver this great community. Thank you very much for your time, and I'm available for any questions, should you have any.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Council will open it up to the bench for questions. Officer Wilson?
Thank you. I just had a question about the removal of the class-three seasonal marsh, as it was called there. If I understand right, that's just to grow the size of the commercial area. Did I understand that part right?
So through the, through the chair, through the expansion of the commercial lot that's located here, in the existing configuration in the document, there was very little space remaining for the employment lands. We understand that that is an important piece for council and the town. So we wanted to ensure that that was maintained through the River Heights Drive realignment as well. That helped to really build out that parcel and make it as efficient as possible.
Okay, thank you. And on the other, the other, the topic of the other two wetlands, the northern two semi-permanent couple that you mentioned there, there's no change from the former DP to the current in regards to those two? It's just the southernmost one?
Through the chair, that is correct. Where this black line is on the existing plan is just in white in this plan. So that road right of way from Alberta Transportation is maintained in both of these plans.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for the clarity.
Counselor McFadden?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple other questions around the wetland as well. So you'd identified that Alberta Environment had responded. I think you said, you know, Alberta Environment had signed off on it. But what does it mean when Alberta Environment has been asked to review it and provide feedback? What does that mean?
Through the chair. So we submitted an application for the removal of the wetland. It's done by an environmental. It's the, the company, or I guess the, the group that reviews it is Alberta Environment and Parks. It's the provincial board. We provided a full report stating how that would be impacted, if there are any impacts, and how we would mitigate any of those impacts moving forward. And they review it to decide whether it needs to remain or whether they are okay with the removal of that and ultimately the development in that location. And they have sent us approval back to say that we are okay to go ahead. So now, moving from that point on, we bring it forward to you for the land use to ensure that council also agrees with that decision and we're able to develop the parcel out.
And so on the provincial side, if the province has identified that that's a wetland that they have deemed able to be removed, they contribute, they require you to, what, contribute funding to wetlands elsewhere? Sorry, I need a refresher on that detail. I used to know it much better.
Through the chair. There is a compensation to the removal of the wetland. So they have a calculation that they put together what they deem the wetland to be worth, and there is compensation that comes from the developer in order to have that removed.
Right. And then, but the compensation doesn't come to the municipality? It goes to a third party or some limited or someone?
Yeah.
Okay. And then my next question, also on your wetlands. So I think the top two in the changes have been identified as preserved wetlands. The third remaining one, I think, is then identified as a wet pond. And I think I need some clarity on what the difference is between a preserved wetland and a wet pond.
Through the chair. Absolutely. I can shed a little bit more light. So as I mentioned, the three wetlands that we're kind of speaking about, class three, these two, and then class, no, sorry, I have that backwards. Class four are these two northern ones, class three is the southern one. This wet pond is a storm pond. So the drainage from the development is sent towards the wet pond, and that's a storm function aside from the wetlands.
Okay. So the existing wetland is going to be utilized as an infrastructure for the site. No?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Mike Anderson with Qualico Communities. Through the chair, the storm pond would be an infrastructure item that would be created by us. It'd be a man-made pond. The other two ponds, through the Water Act approval and our application with AEP there on the wetland removal on the south, it actually addressed those ones too. Those ones are sustainable in the developed scenario with water that will be run off into them outside of the storm pond. So those ones will not receive any storm water from the development, just run off from their catchment areas. The storm pond will convey all the water from the roads and the development sites and into that pond, and then ultimately down back to the Bow River.
Okay, as part of.
Yeah, as part of like the engineering infrastructure for the community, yes.
Okay, great. And then what I really do appreciate about this proposal is advancing the commitment to more trails and connectivity and park space. And so one of the criticisms we often hear, of course, is, is the amenities come late in the development, and it, there's a high desirability from our community to start seeing some of these different amenities appearing earlier in the development as opposed to waiting to the tail end. So I guess, kind of, what's the timeline that we might see some of these connectivities happening and these parks happening?
Yeah. So the intent is to, so to allow for the, mainly the north-south connection there, which has the dog park in it, is where the AltaLink realignment is going to occur. So we're in with, our AltaLink is in with, is in with the Alberta Utility Commission right now for that realignment. They're anticipating moving that line in April of next, starting in April of next year, wrapping that up by the end of June, which would allow us to get in there to landscape this. So that area is part of our original striping and grading area, which allows us to get in there to landscape it next year. So it is our intent to bring that pathway connection and dog park on with our construction program in two thousand twenty-five.
Okay. So those will be complete in two thousand twenty-five. AltaLink's doing its work in two thousand twenty-five. And then the question I keep getting asked from residents all the time is the status of the James Walker Trail. And so then that work is going to be done. Can you just refresh me on what's the timeline for the James Walker Trail connectivity to be usable, I guess?
So right now, Qualico's working towards, we're in our design phase. James Walker Trail through our portion of the land, so that'd be kind of, here, I'll try and show you to the traffic circle here, which is where the town's portion of it works. We are, we are working with the town. The town is at, and urban systems are at ninety percent drawings right now. So they're very close on their drawings, and we're working on ways to accelerate the timeline on the town's portion there as well, seeing if there's some efficiencies that can be gained between your program and our program as well. So we are working towards doing that next year, both portions.
So the ultimate goal, then, if everything falls into place, is James Walker, that whole section, is going to be hopefully by the end of the construction season next year, are we driving vehicles on it?
Yep, yep.
That's the big answer folks want to know about James Walker. Okay, great. That's, that's good news. Yeah, and thank you for identifying that you're working with Harmony in the Stage Two to talk about those connections between the communities. So, but those are my questions for now. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Reed?
Yeah. Focus on the wetlands is obvious. And as council members, we're receiving a lot of inquiries about that. You might appreciate that. And so I wanted to continue in that same vein. So I understand to Counselor McFadden's question about Alberta Environment approving the removal of that wetland and their approval to support that. You referenced the Department of Highways and future expansion of Highway twenty-two. How, what are the impacts of that? You've referenced it, and you must have some ideas what that will mean for the other wetlands or your pond.
Through the chair. So Alberta, Alberta Transportation has done a functional study on the expansion of Highway twenty-two. They are still needing to do some detailed design work and engineering of that location. But essentially, what we see through this black line or sort of area that we're showing is the right-of-way that could be utilized. It's not necessarily a hundred percent going to be disturbed up until that point, but it is the area that is under review so that they can ensure they have enough space for the roadway and any backfilling that's needed.
So, sorry, to be, to be clear, if Alberta Transportation were to go ahead with this plan as proposed, recognizing there's still more work to come, these wetlands would be, have been removed anyways? Is that what you're saying?
Through the chair. It is a potential, but it's not a hundred percent that they would be removed.
Yeah. And then, and on a positive note, I think there are many things in this proposal that I, that I really like. I like the increased park space, the additional pathways, the widening of pathways, the habitat improvement enhancements, the school connectivity. There's so many really, really positive things about this. So thank you.
Counselor Pardaco?
Thank you for the information. Going back to that wetland discussion about the widening of Highway twenty-two in the future. So we have no timeline on the widening of Highway twenty-two, nor you just said that the wetland would actually be impacted, perhaps, just depending on what that design phase looks like. So why are we necessarily removing it right now? Is it just to, like, ultimately, is it just to advance commercial development?
Through the chair. So the, the removal that we are requesting today is for the development of South Bow Landing. Ultimately, the right-of-way area to the west of us is all under Alberta Transportation. So they would dictate kind of how they proceed, or if they are wanting to utilize that entire area, and the wetlands would be removed. But in the interim, until that happens, we are looking to retain the two higher-class wetlands and in, in hopes that essentially Alberta Transportation is able to work around them and they are able to remain ultimately.
Okay. Thank you for the information. Yeah, I just think that without having a clear path forward with Highway twenty-two expansion, we're still waiting for Highway one A to be expanded at this point. So I think it's, it's a little far out from my reach. So, thank you.
Don't see any other questions. Most of mine have been asked already, but one. And I'm also going to focus on wetlands. And you touched on a little bit in some of your commentary, but how are the, so assuming the proposal is, is given second reading and passed, the remaining wetlands, how will they be preserved in your plan? We've heard in other communities how wetlands are being impacted, whether we save them or not because of the development around them. How will you mitigate that from becoming a problem for us in the future?
To the chair, absolutely. That's a great question. So when, when we applied for the removal to AEP for the third wetland, it also came with some, we reviewed the northernmost wetlands at the same time. And there is a four-year retention plan that's required to be completed by a biologist. They do annual checks, I think actually more often than that, might be quarterly checks, to see how the wetlands are functioning and if the ultimate function is still working the way it is intended to. And so that is. And so that is ensured that it's maintained through that program. And at the end of the four years, AEP does another check, and there's another report that has to be sent to them to ensure that ultimately the wetlands are functioning as they would like to see them.
Okay, perfect, thank you, appreciate that answer. Just maybe along the enhanced park in the central part of the development, can you maybe expand on how that's coming to be? I just want to, like, distill at a high level, you're shifting some lands over on the, where the marsh is, to accommodate more commercial lands, but also that's allowing some more room on the interior of the development for an expansion of some parks. Am I hearing that correctly?
To the chair, you are absolutely correct. So there is an adjustment to both the commercial lot and the industrial lot, but when we are requesting to preserve the two northernmost wetlands, we've built it into the plan to ensure that there is the retention of the pond itself, but also the habitat enhancement, like you mentioned, there is planting and then a pathway that's proposed to go through there as well, so that it really ensures that that is a successful area and that both pedestrians and cyclists are able to actually use that space, and it becomes part of the development as well. So that's all built into the plan, and we have sort of noted the different placements of meeting nodes or urban walk connections and how that would all function through this area.
Nice, okay, thank you. Think about council some more time for questions, I'm not seeing any at this point, so we'll reserve for some closing remarks at the end.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
At this point, I'll go to the speakers list. I'm being told there was not anyone on the speakers list, so given the absence of that, I will call, is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to speak for or against the application?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward and state your name. Neil, state your name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Neil Excard, and I'm here on behalf of myself, my wife, and then a couple of my neighbors. I didn't get a presentation in before 10, so I don't have any pictures for you today, but I did send you some stuff through email that you could take a look at. So I guess my first comment about it, I'm against this, and so are the people that I have spoken with. And in general, before I get into my particular remarks about it, I am frustrated and other people are frustrated about having to come here and speak about saving wetlands more than, again and again and again, is what it feels like. There has been, already been a huge meeting, and I've heard from people tonight who specifically told me they can't be here because they don't have time to keep coming down to council and saying how they feel about the same issues over and over again, when they have kids to raise and they have jobs to do, and when they have, their time could be spent in other ways making the community better. So one of my questions to council is why are we having public hearings about the destruction of wetlands? So that general theme has come across from a number of people that I've talked to. So please vote no in the South Bow Landing, Land Use Amendments and Neighborhood Plan, primarily because of the wetland and then the population redistribution. So Cochraneites have spoken loudly and repeatedly over many years that we highly value wetlands, the connections to nature, and we want it protected as a town grows. These feelings have been expressed in the envisioned 2050. During the last presentation, we had a, had a whole bunch of slides about that, it's also in your emails. All throughout envisioned 2050, wetlands and, wetlands are specifically called out for protection, and so is environment in general. We had the Willows Wetland Public Hearing, where we all know there were hundreds of comments and many hours spent here listening to people expound on why wetlands are important to them. The town of Cochrane has a wetland policy, there is a natural protection group that's being formed in, by the town. We, the town, Cochraneites saved the wetlands, which is right beside the highway, beside Ford, right in that same area, and there's lots of other examples. So why are we talking about wetlands again, and why are we even at a public hearing where we're asking to destroy a class three wetland? One of the things that is presented is the land trade between the, which feels like a land trade between we destroy the wetland, we give you a dog park. One of my questions there is, this is under a power line, are we allowed to build anything under a power line? Are we going to put homes, are we going to put not-green space under a high-voltage power line? That power line has been there forever, why was it not included in the plans? Did they plan to go underground? If they didn't, they, why are they, is it above ground now? If it was always going to be above ground and cutting through that community, why are we crediting the developer with putting a dog park in a space that has to be green? That doesn't sound like they're doing anything, it sounds like they are taking something that has to be there as part of the infrastructure and using that to balance out the destruction of the wetland. So one of the other questions that came up, and we've talked about this before, is the Water Act approval. The Water Act approval doesn't do any public consultation. You pay a fee for tens of thousands of dollars, depending on the value of the wetland, in order to destroy the wetland, and their job is not to protect wetlands. If we want wetlands in our town, there is a copy of the email in the presentation that I sent to you guys, from the person from Alberta Water Act, that explicitly states that the separation in responsibilities between Alberta Water Act and council. Council's decision, the town's decision, is whether to destroy or keep the wetland. They are completely separate. So it doesn't matter if Water Act approves the destruction of wetlands, it's council has to decide, representing the people who live here. So I guess that's about it on the wetland side. The other part is the population increase. I'm guessing you've heard a lot of questions about, I know you've heard a bunch of questions about the James Walker Trail. There, in our, one of the other hearings that had a huge amount of attendance was for the Towers in South Bow, the parcels A, B, and C. Some of the things that came out of that were moving the high and medium density away from those, to, away from those areas, away from the existing neighborhoods. Don't put the tall buildings on those hills and make a better interface between the Willows and South Bow. Why is this relevant to this discussion? Because developers asking for a population increase. So it would make sense that if they're going to increase the population here, that they should use this opportunity to shift that population away from where Cochraneites don't want it to be, and change that interface to a linear park that continues what's now in front of Riverside, and use the type of housing that's shown to be acceptable to people bordering these new communities, which is walkouts, either duplex or single-family homes. The other concern I have there is with the increase, I know it says it's small, but it's a 10% increase, so it's 1,000 people, which would bring this to be 10,200 people, so 28%, 28% increase in residents in this, in Cochrane's residents. So that's 37,000 people, and there's no proper road yet, we're all hoping it gets done as soon as possible. So since the developer is open to changing the land use and neighborhood plan, my request is that the town push for shifting the population away from the borders, the medium density, completely away from Willows and Riverside, where there's already been a lot of resistance, extending that linear park across there, across the boundary between Willows and Riverside, putting those families, duplex and walkouts as part of the changes that they do, and then limiting the number of people until James Walker Trail is complete. Let me see if I have any of the notes that I took while the presentation was going on. Going back to the, going back to the wetlands, regarding the highways, it may be destroyed in the future, but it's not a guarantee. It's all the more reason for keeping them now, because we could lose them in the future, whether we have control over it or not. In the drawings, we saw the lines of the highway only cut through part, a small part, seemed like a small part of the wetland they want to destroy. So why are we destroying the whole wetlands when only part of it may be affected in the Try to summarize it. So essentially, please vote no to this land use proposal because it's including the destruction of the wetlands. Please work on shifting the popu, if they're going to change the population density, please work on shifting it from where people don't want it to be to other places it can be. And don't credit developers for creating green spaces that have to be there due to utility rights of ways. And I guess that is pretty much it. So thank you very much for your time and for listening to me again.
Okay, we, looks like we have a question for you.
Okay.
Councilor Reed.
Thank you for your presentation, it's always entertaining. You know, the first part of your presentation recognized the wetlands, and I think we've all spoken to that, but this is much more than this whole proposal. This bylaw change is not just about wetlands, that's one segment of it, right? And so I think it's appropriate in being transparent with those that may be watching or listening, or those that you might subsequently report to or speak to, that this is much more than that, right? But I understand and I appreciate your comments about the wetland, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the gallery wishing to speak for or against tonight? Yep, please come forward.
My name's David Lanoff, I am a resident of the Willows. I did not come prepared with anything. I would just like to echo Neil's sentiments. I think everybody in the Willows and the surrounding area is extremely against the entire South Bow plan at this point. I think it puts a lot of undue pain and burden on the current residents. I know I'm in parcel, I can't remember.
Heather, what parcel?
Is behind A and B, right? So we're parcel A and B, and we've, we went and we met, we visited with the developers, we did the site tour, and I really don't think they've done anything to, you know, remediate our concerns as far as proximity and the detriment to our property values. Again, I know that's not the purpose of this meeting, and I would just staunchly say that I'm, you know, against all of this, and I'm just a guy, but I think all of the current residents feel the same way. I think the developer has 300 acres to develop, and what I'm frustrated with is that nothing is fully approved yet, there's been no solid plan put in place yet. All I see is dump trucks and excavators running through the rear of my house, day in and day out, seven days a week, dust blowing in and like whatever, it's a minor inconvenience, but I don't think they've really addressed any of our concerns. I think there's other ways that they could, you know, set up the developments that doesn't impact current residents. And I think that's the problem that everybody in the town currently has. And what is the plan with the influx of new residents? Every single school in Cochrane is at capacity and overflowing. They just had to add new portables, and there's already not enough room for the kids at Fireside Public School, and then you have the Catholic School, which I believe is at, what, 90% capacity? So you're going to add another, you guys call it 10,000 residents, but are you including their children in that number? What if you have families coming in with three-plus kids? Where are they going to go to school? You're putting all of this burden on the teachers, the families, we get zero benefit, and then we get our whole lifestyle that we purchased and paid good money in Cochrane to live? And now we just get, we're just to the wayside, we're just an afterthought? I think it's disrespectful, I think it's short-sighted, and quite frankly, I think it's unethical. And I think there's other ways that they can develop these properties so that everybody wins. I don't want to get in the way of progress. We understood that there was going to be new community built south of us. What we were not told, and what I think is completely unfair, is that now you guys plan to build high-density 15-meter structures on top of a already probably 20-meter hill behind my, behind our houses? Like, how is that fair to any of the current residents? It's not plain and simple. And they said it right in their presentation, they're trying to bribe us with spaces that should already be there, oh, more property tax revenue, that's great, but who wants to move to a town where they can't even get their kid into a school? You know what I mean? So like, again, I'm emotional about this because it drastically affects all of us as current residents, I think it's unfair. And I would just ask town council to be pragmatic and to be realistic and not get blinded by the promise of more tax revenue. Like, let's do it right so that everybody's happy. Let's not screw current residents over, pardon my language, to service this new community that people may or may not come here. Like, it's just, it's beyond me how this was even thought out in the beginning. There was 100,000 ways they could have configured South Bow Landing that everybody would win. And I think that's, you guys need to think long and hard about it before you approve any land use amendments. So I'll leave it at that, I appreciate your time, I appreciate everything you guys do, I know you don't have the easiest job in the world, but let's not just think about future residents, because you have your current residents looking at you real hard right now. And that's all I'd say.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before you leave, it looks like Councilor Wilson has a question.
Not for the presenter, just for administration.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Just a comment and a question, if I could. The comment is that it seems like everyone around the bench, in my experience here, completely agrees with a lot of the frustrations of the presenter, and that's something we've spent a lot of time on in the last several years, talking about how we can financially analyze our growth and make sure that we can pay for the infrastructure demands that new residents bring and charging appropriately for it. It's a, it's my top concern, I believe, and I agree with the presenter that that's of the utmost, of the utmost value to us right now. I had two questions to administration, though, about that, just about what we just heard. One was, does anyone have an approximate date of the original land use and neighborhood plan approval that happened for South Bow Landing? It would be before my time on council, but I'm guessing maybe 2015, or if anyone over there had a approximate date for that?
I think we could leave that to the applicant, too, unless administration has the answer, but we don't usually get into a back and forth with administration during public hearings, but I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you through the chair, perhaps we could start with that, and then we can address that if necessary after the applicant has spoken.
Perfect, I'll just put my other question into the ether for the applicant, too, then if that was appropriate, and that's just, I think I heard the answer of when the A and B property discussion for properties adjacent to Willows comes back to council, and I think I heard that's January, but again, the presenter just triggered that question for me, so thank you, January, we'll be talking about that, okay? So I'll just, I'll just leave those in the air for the applicant, and thanks for the airtime.
Yeah, so approval of, the original approval date of the South Bow Landing hole, and the, when was A, B, and C coming back?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, is there anyone else in the gallery wishing to speak? Yep?
I have a question. Is there going to be a presentation for each, or are we doing that now?
Yes, is the short answer. Yeah, yes, as in we're going to have a public hearing for each? There may not be a presentation for both, I'm not sure. I'm looking at Legislative Services, I think I have that. Oh, the question was, are we doing two separate public hearings, one for the, for the two items? Or one whole public hearing? But I understand we're doing one and then the other. Ms. Robertson?
I believe the presentations were combined, given the land use amendment and the neighborhood plan are linked. So if someone would like to get up and speak now, specific to either of those items, you could do that now, we will need to close each hearing individually, but all of the questions can come at this point.
Okay, so it's a hybrid of that, of what I said. So we're doing two, yes, please, come forward. You can speak to both now, but we're going to open, it'll be weird, we're going to open and close both, but you can speak to both now.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Thank you, Mayor and council, my name is Heather Lemon, I'm a resident of Cochrane. So I have a few points to make that might be similar to Neil, and they're largely connected to the change of the community plan as opposed to the removal of the wetland. My question about the wetland is if we have to remove the wetland because the road will be expanded, why is it okay to build a building there if the road will be expanded? I just, perhaps I am misunderstanding the plan, but no one seemed to ask that question, it seemed obvious to me, so something to consider. I also have a question about the increase in population density for the South Bow community. There's a red line change that wasn't really spoken to in the community, and I think that the applicant should address why that change is in there, considering what they've talked about is an increase to commercial space and an increase to green space, which should not increase population. Yes, and I also, Neil touched on this, but I think it's important. It is a massive disparity in power and ability for community members. It is a massive disparity in power and ability for community members to read hundreds of pages of application documents under the heading of a wetland removal, when in fact, it's a big, important change to a community development plan, and it has nothing to do with the removal of the wetland. You know, it's, we're the ones not being paid to be here, but we're spending massive hours reading hundreds of pages of submissions from the applicants so that we can be informed and do our duty as citizens and participate in these public hearings. We do it because it's important to us, but we're not getting paid to do it. We're paying babysitters so we can be here. And again, it's the same issues over and over that we're repeating. We're sending emails. And we, like, are you guys listening? You know, it's just, we are getting so tired, and there's more coming in January. So just something to consider. I also wanted to raise a point that there has been a big campaign from residents of the Willows to have a pathway put behind the Willows, sort of south of the Willows, north of the summit, that would connect the existing pathway through to where the high school is and along where the bike path is, sort of halfway down the hill on River Heights Drive. That's something that was promised to the residents of the Willows when we moved in there. It's not part of the plan. I was really hoping to see it on the amended community plan tonight because it's been raised to the developer by many, many residents, and I'm not seeing it on there. I'm wondering why. When there's a plan before council to increase pathways, why is that one not in there? And again, if this community plan is being revised tonight, I am wondering why the repeated requests of existing members of the Cochrane community are not reflected within the changes, which would reflect what has been stated about moving high density or moving density away from existing communities and within the community that is being developed, where people can make a choice to move beside that or not. If we're changing the community plan, I'm just wondering why the concerns and requests that have been repeated over and over and over again by members of this community are not reflected in that plan. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Don't see any questions. I'm trying to bite my tongue, but I'm not going to. The, I understand, we get this question a lot, why? Why are we going through these? It is a landowner's right to come forward with a land use change. It has nothing to do with council. We're not driving this. This is a landowner coming forward with a proposal. We hear from the public. We hear from our administration. We make a decision. That might happen 100 times in a council term or sometimes very few times. So we're just going through the process. That's... Yep. Okay, anyone else in the gallery wishing to speak? Sorry, Council McFadden, I missed your light before.
Yep, I'm not in the gallery. But yeah, just following up on Council Wilson's request of to get the timing, just to confirm the timeline of the approval of South Bow, and also if we can confirm the timing of the Willows. Being on the council to approve both of those, my recollection is that they were kind of within a year, and so in the council planning of the time, they fit, and that was, both of those were approved before anybody lived there. It was kind of the context, but I'd like to get the dates confirmed to get that information. And then just to follow on the mayor's comments, and I hear the frustration, and I want to say thank you very much to the speakers who spoke. I know it's, you know, it's your homes, and you're passionate, but it's also an intimidating space to come and do this, so thank you very much for that. And I know what that's like, so I want to say thank you for that. And just to speak again on the process piece, is anytime we go through one of these, we are under the provincial laws, we are required to do the first reading, then a public hearing, and then the second and third. So this is a process that we are mandated to go through, and we do try to make it as easy as possible for everybody to participate. So I just wanted to kind of back up maybe a little bit of an education piece on the civics of it all, but to also show my appreciation for everybody that continues to engage, because I do know how intimidating and a lot of work it is, but I want to show my appreciation for that.
Council Fedeko?
Hi, yeah, actually, do you have a question for the applicant? It's been brought up a couple different times from Council Wilson, as well as from members in the community. And we're talking about those high-density parcels that are coming forward. What happens if you don't get approval? What does that look like? Has there been any discussion in the background, perhaps shifting those interfaces? I realize that this presentation has nothing necessary to do with that, but I honestly believe that this is an important time to bring that forward. If there have been changes, anything discussed in the background, what does it look like if it doesn't get approved? I think honestly, it just gives, it gives some reassurance maybe to residents on either side, but I think it's something that is kind of missed. And when we do talk about shifting around plans, I can guarantee that everybody's looking at this. They've looked at Greystone. They've looked at other communities where the shifting of plans and of parcels has absolutely happened, and so I think we owe it to the residents to be able to provide them that answer.
Yeah, so I'm not hearing anyone else wanting to speak, so let's call the applicant back up. Thank you. I think we got a number of questions. Council Fedeko's got one now about A, B, and C, but we gotta be careful we're not mixing the two hearing topics, but please.
Okay, thank you, Council. Thank you for all of the questions here this evening. I've been keeping notes. Hopefully, we can run through and answer all of the questions that were asked. I'm just gonna go from top to bottom in the order I wrote them down, if that's okay.
Sure.
Hopefully, we'll capture everything there. And Christina's gonna back me up and fix any dates that I'm getting wrong. So with respect to timing of approvals, I'll just go back to this map here. So the River Heights Area Structure Plan, outlined in yellow here, was approved in 2013. The Willows Neighborhood Plan was approved in 2012. The Neighborhood Plan for South Bow Landing was approved in 2015. So the land use and neighborhood plan for South Bow has been in place since 2015. With respect to the AltaLink right-of-way, that was mentioned a couple of times. As you're aware, that currently, the alignment kind of runs across generally in this direction, like this, across the screen here. So that was always intended to be moved. It was always understood that that would be required to be relocated in order to develop the parcels essentially beneath it, as one of the speakers alluded to. So that realignment into this location here puts it into an appropriate utility corridor with an existing ATCO line that runs in this location as well. So certainly, that's not an area where houses could be built beneath the ATCO right-of-way, but it presents an opportunity for us to more effectively use that space. So you'll see the pathway components been added there, as well as the off-leash dog park. I'll just note, the plan always planned for an off-leash dog park, but in this location down here, within that existing right-of-way down here, so we're actually adding a second location based on comments and feedback that we heard from administration. So we're actually adding an additional component there, which we think is appropriate. With respect to the wetland, I just wanted to highlight that the Water Act application that was submitted and runs through the provincial process, it is a public process. Notification is posted on site, and it is advertised in the paper. I don't know the specific dates offhand, although we could pull them for you, so it was advertised in the spring. The public is given an opportunity to comment and to speak to that, and there's a process with the province to work through that if comments are received by the public with respect to any wetland alteration or removal. And I can also kind of confirm that the compensation that's provided by the applicant with respect to removing a wetland does go to additional rehabilitation and improvements to existing wetland spaces within the region. So that's something as well that I don't think we noted earlier. With respect to population, so I'll just note that the reason that you see that change in the plan with the increase to population overall, the original plan was approved under the town's original land use bylaw. I think it was adopted in like 2012, 2002, 2004, sorry. Old land use bylaw, and so when we brought this application forward, we've now converted each of the districts to the appropriate district under the current land use bylaw. So there you see kind of the range of minimum and maximum densities or units within each of those districts has changed. It's updated and reflected across the town, so there is a change there to all of the stats tables to reflect that change. So that's us aligning with the current planning framework within the town. With respect to the multifamily sites that were brought up, again, a number of times, so as we noted, we're not applying to change the zoning on these two parcels today. We, obviously, I mean, everyone's kind of familiar with the process there. The land use application that we had submitted last year was not successful in front of council in May of this year. So we've undertaken a fairly comprehensive engagement program with the public that just wrapped up a number of weeks ago. And I think last week or the week before, we submitted our applications to support medium-density land use on those parcels. I know we're not here to consider that today, but I will highlight that we've included a linear MR within, to create a transition between the Willows and those homes. That's in direct feedback to what we heard from the public. It's an important piece for us, and we're going to move forward with that application. We do expect that that will come forward for your consideration sometime in the new year. We haven't reflected it here in the neighborhood plan. We did discuss it and we considered it, but we didn't want to presuppose a decision of council. We felt it would be inappropriate to show something until it's come before you and you've had an opportunity to make a decision on it. I think that's about it. No changes proposed to the three school sites within the plan. Those remain the same. And I think those are kind of the main things that we heard. Is there anything else I missed, Christina, that was asked? I think I answered all of the questions, but happy to answer anything else that you have.
Okay, I see a couple lights, or at least one, so we'll open it up. Council McFadden?
Yes, thank you very much. I had a number of different questions. One of our speakers spoke to some community advocacy regarding a trail connection, and I have to admit, I was unclear. If you're familiar with it, could you show that to me on the map and help me to understand that one better?
I think the speaker was referring to a pathway connection in this area here. So I'm aware of the recent application on the summit lands where there was quite a bit of community advocacy, I guess, to see a pathway kind of achieved in here to create that more appropriate transition between existing single-family and what's proposed on the other side. So that, as I understand, was included in that application and something that council was supportive of. So we, during the public engagement work that we've done over the last number of months, we had a number of those conversations, and certainly that was the preference from residents, I would say, overall in what we heard, is to create that connection and continuation in this area here. In our case, there's an existing, I don't know if we have a map that shows it very well. Sorry, maybe not, but there's an existing ER portion right here with an existing pathway, and it allows us to kind of connect into that and create that buffer around the Willows. Additionally, we included in this amendment pathway connection in this location, which wasn't originally there, but it was suggested to us that that would be a benefit to create kind of a north-south connection between the Willows and us.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. It helps me to visualize it better. And then I was just doing a review of the three school sites that are part of the plan. I think those are all standardly at 4.43, 4.86 hectares. Is, remind me, these sites, that's meant for school site designed for elementary and junior highs, but not large enough for high schools. Is that correct?
Through the chair, the allotment throughout the plan actually allows for a middle school and a high school and a kindergarten to grade nine, I believe it is.
Okay, so kind of the full range of schools?
In all three.
There's school sites that could allow that?
Through the chair, the easternmost school that you see on the screen here, this one, is allotted for the high school.
Okay, thank you. And then the westernmost one?
I believe this is the K to nine.
Okay, and then the small one to the north?
Is a seven to nine.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. Of course, and then understanding, of course, it's one thing for us to allocate it and put it there and help with the servicing. The second part is working with the school board partners and, of course, working with provincial funding to make those happens, but they have been planned for in the site. Okay, thank you. And then my third question, back to the commercial site, so that where you were looking to expand, to remove the wetland and expand that commercial site. So the reason for the expansion, has your market research proven a demand for commercial on that site, or what's driving that? Or I guess that's industrial on the south.
Yep, thank you. So you're right. So certainly, this site here, the reason for the increase to the commercial site is in response to the purchaser of that site has a number of tenants kind of in mind that they're working with, and so it allows for better kind of allocation of that site to get the anchor tenant and all of the supporting tenants there that they're looking for and better movement, as Christina highlighted, better access, and it's just an improved site. With respect to the industrial site here, so as we noted in the plan, and I'll get the numbers wrong, we are decreasing the amount of industrial within the plan by a couple of acres. But for us, it's really about an improved orientation of those lands. As you can see in the adopted plan, we kind of have a number of what I would call kind of residual industrial parcels. There's four of them. They're all bisected by River Heights Drive and the Green Spine running through the plan, as well, as you can imagine, in this area here, that's really kind of inefficient use of land in those areas there. And so, I mean, certainly, when Qualico came into the plan, this was already in place. So we've done that evaluation and determined that with the other adjustments that we're making in the north portion, that this would be in a more appropriate and efficient use of land in this location. It allows us to kind of amalgamate each of those pieces into a parcel that's usable. We don't have a tenant or a buyer for that parcel as of now, but as you noted, the industrial district within the land use bylaw is actually kind of more light industrial or almost commercial, so we don't expect any type of kind of heavy use in that location. It also allowed us to move kind of the municipal services site. It's really hard to see on this plan, but we have identified a future location for an EMS or an emergency response facility. We've worked with the fire department here at the town to understand kind of their needs, and we've been able to allocate that to a more appropriate location within the plan and somewhere that might be able to provide a little bit larger area, which would serve their needs, as we understand it.
And then I think my, sorry, go ahead.
I'll also just add to that statement as well. When we were first coming forward with the pre-application meeting and reviewing this with administration, we did discuss the employment center lands or the industrial general, and there was a sentiment received that it's important both to administration and from any of the previous council meetings when this plan was approved, to maintain the industrial lands as much as possible to allow for that sort of village center and to have the different uses there. So that was some of the feedback we received, and we worked to try to achieve that and make sure that the parcel was still functional.
Okay, and I think just my last question here. So in the original design for the commercial bordering the wetlands on the north, those two parcels, there's a setback piece that was identified, and then now that you're strengthening, now that you're straightening that line, I mean, are you still respecting the wetland setback? I couldn't quite tell it from the map.
We are, yeah. So certainly, a larger setback was identified in the original plan, as you noted, and so part of our application to the province was to understand, essentially based on updated information. StanTech did field surveys, and as Christina noted, we had biologists and other folks like that come out and evaluate the wetlands as they are today. And so they included all of that evaluation in their application to the province, and ultimately, the province was comfortable with adjusting that setback requirement. So we are still maintaining essentially a safe distance from the wetland so as not to negatively disturb it. But like we say, based on updated survey information and things like that, it was appropriate to do so.
All right, yeah, thank you very much for that information. I appreciate it.
Council Nagel?
In the commercial zoning areas, what, how many stories are those buildings expected to be?
Sorry, through the chair to Council Nagel. I'll have to double-check. I don't remember offhand, and I don't want to give you the wrong answer. We can certainly check that for you, though. It would be dictated by the regulations in the CG district there in the land use bylaw. Let us pull that for you. Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my question is whether or not there's been any consideration to just increase the density of the commercial in those areas, because it's very often we see developers want to increase the density of their residential neighborhoods to fit more homes in, but I never see densification of commercial areas to fit more businesses in. And I was wondering if there's been some consideration of that as a means to protect the wetland.
That's a good question. I would say that certainly, the end users of that site, my experience so far is that certainly, they are looking to be as efficient as possible with those sites. Part of that boundary configuration... Part of that boundary configuration is certainly part of that, ensuring that they're able to kind of efficiently use the space with parking and landscaping requirements and all those types of things. But I don't know, like you say, in terms of like going up essentially from a commercial perspective, they would be limited by whatever's provided for in the bylaw. Eight stories is the maximum according to the land use bylaw. So that would come forward to you through a development permit. If we're successful today, then the purchaser for the lands, the commercial lands there is keen to advance their applications, and they would come forward with a development permit to propose individual uses, tenancies, and layout of the site.
So I'm also wondering, are you at all open to amending your application to protect that wetland prior to advancing to second reading?
Essentially, would we be willing to, like, to go back to a configuration like this if council was not seeking to support kind of the land use configuration in this area?
It's very difficult to have full and transparent conversations in the context of these public hearings where I'm not supposed to share my opinion, but I'm just here to ask questions. Should council not be comfortable with bulldozing a wetland to build on top of it? Are you, are you open to changing the plans that doesn't have to be done prior to the second reading?
Thank you for the question. Actually, I would say that, I mean, the application we've put before you is our intention and the goal for the plan, we feel that it is supported technically and otherwise. That being said, we would certainly appreciate council's direction in terms of what you would support prior to second and third reading. If there is an opportunity to make changes to what we've proposed such that council would be in a position to support the application, we would certainly like to understand that and we would be open to considering those adjustments. That wouldn't be, I'm so sorry, I'm starting to lose my voice, I don't mean to croak at you. I think that's important for us to understand, we know that as decision-makers, you have a lot to consider in front of you. It's difficult for us when we step away from a decision, you know, to be honest with refusal or something like that, it's difficult for us to know then what to come forward with or what might be appropriate. So any kind of direction from council that we can consider is very helpful, and that would allow us to work with administration to find a path forward that's reasonable. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I have a question for the chair and administration. How then can we express our opinion during this public hearing so that the developer, the applicant knows what we're looking for? Even though in these public hearings, we're not supposed to debate or share opinions or state positions, but it sounds like they want to know our position, so.
Yeah, I think Council Nagel, that would happen at second reading. And instead of giving second reading, we would provide direction and then perhaps suspend second reading or, what's the recess? Postpone, thank you, I know it's one of those words, and then provide direction and then that would come back at a second, second reading. Second half of a second reading.
Stay tuned.
Okay, Council McFadden?
Yeah, sorry, the number of questions from our residents actually caused me to expand my notes. One of the things that was identified as a question, and then you clarified, was that the utility right-of-way, the power, had been moved from a kind of a big diagonal that it has currently going across the property, and what you're doing is working with AltaLink to, to move it more of a north, north-south alignment, to more effectively use the space. And then what you're saying is that in that realignment, you're going to make it more useful space by putting in some parks and pathways and off-leash parks and trying to make as best use of that win as you can. But it did spark the idea, so is the power line still going to be like above grade? Like, so you're still going to see power lines? There's no way to put those below ground at this point?
My colleague can speak to the option of putting underground, I do think we evaluated it, but overall, the, the realignment will still include an above-ground power line, but it will look a bit different than the power lines do today, if I'm not mistaken, sorry.
Yeah, correct. The power line will remain above ground, we did review the options, and it's very, it was cost prohibitive to put it underground because it is a transmission line, so just the requirements to put it underground. And the proximity of it to the ATCO line actually played a bigger part in that. ATCO doesn't like power by their, their lines, so having it above ground allowed them to run parallel to each other. Having it underground, there would have had to be, it would have eaten up even more space than, than what it currently is, so the, the decision was made to put it above ground on different structures. So it's not going to be the metal structures that you see out there, it's a, it's a, it's a single wood structure with three lines running on top of each other instead of it spread out, so it does take up less space in its proposed scenario.
It's going to be a little bit more attractive than the very...
Yeah, and, and it's not, it's not like, it's not one of the, the giant transmission lines, this is on the lower end of their transmission line, so it's, it, it does have more of a feel of, of kind of your traditional power line than, than a big transmission line with the big steel structures.
All right, thank you for that clarity, I appreciate it.
Council Nagel, another question?
Well, yeah, I was seeking clarification on the height maximums for the proposed zones on the west there. The eight stories, is that just for the orange section titled, well, section one?
For both districts.
Both districts are eight stories? And is it that high under the current plan as well, and as well as the proposed? Okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah, Council Nagel was kind of going to where my hopefully last question is, and it's going to be around if we approve nothing, there is an approval already in place. I think that's where you're going, Council Nagel, about what's there currently. And what I understand why you're bringing forward this application in the first place is to improve on the plan that you inherited when you bought the lands. Would that be a, a good summary of, and, and so you're, you're shifting some things within the, the pre-approved lands to improve the neighborhood in which you want to deliver on?
Yes, absolutely, and to update the plan to current conditions. As we highlighted, there's been a number of changes with respect to zoning and, and end-users and AltaLink and lots of different things, so for us, it's an opportunity to update and to improve the plan so that we can deliver on that in a way that makes the most sense for, for Cochrane today.
Yeah, okay, I just think it's important that we, we talk in terms of, there's an approval that this council has no say in what, what's happening. We're talking about shifting what's there to something different. Yeah, okay. I don't see any other questions. I think that's going to conclude the public hearing for tonight, we'll adjourn that one. Thank you, and then we will open, oh, sorry, yeah.
Sorry, Eric, if I'm funny, can I just ask one additional question, or is the fourth?
We just closed it. I'm going to open and close the next one. There may be a question you can ask in that one. It's a procedural thing. So that, that hearing's closed, we'll open the other hearing, which is the South Bow Landing, stage one. This is mainly just a procedural thing, but if there's a question or someone who wants to speak, I'm, I'm assuming your, your presentation covered both, so we're good. But if there's anyone in the gallery wishing to speak on this, so if you have a question. You could just come to the, yeah.
I guess, sorry. And again, this is hypothetical and hopefully a worst-case scenario, but I think there's a lot of assumptions made on this new South Bow Landing proposal. We're in extremely volatile political climate right now, both economically and ideologically, as you all are well aware. Energy and resources are a major local economic driver as well as provincial economic driver, and quite frankly, are national economic, economic drivers, sorry, excuse me. They're proposing, our neighbors to the south are proposing 25% tariffs on all imports into the United States, which will drastically affect our ability to compete on a national stage. And all of these proposed school sites are great, and safety infrastructure, whether it's fire or police, everything's contingent on not only local funding but provincial and federal funding. So if we do encounter a worst-case scenario where energy prices collapse, industries collapse, is there a contingency plan when you're inviting all of these new residents into the community of Cochrane, and we're not going to have the funding to build the required, the school sites we require? We're not going to have the funding to build a new police and firehouse to service the existing community? Worst-case scenario, we have a fire, how, what's town council's plan to address those potential issues, and what's the developer's plan to address those potential issues? Because I don't think that's been addressed at all, and I think there's a lot of assumptions being made on both the demand for these new developments and how we're going to fund all of these schools that are going to be required and all of the additional infrastructure that will be required to service the community. I don't think anybody's spoken to that, and I think residents deserve some answers and some forethought in how we'll deal with those challenges should the worst come to pass, because, you know, Mr. Trump has made it very clear that he's not messing around, and this could severely impact our economic abilities both as a town and as a province. And I don't think that's been addressed at all, and I think it should be.
Okay, we'll take that into consideration.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the gallery? Okay.
So, name's Neil Exgar, just a question on behalf of one of my neighbors, and their concern was the increase of 1,000 residents, and if we keep increasing 1,000 residents every time, every time a request is made, is that the direction the town wants to go is increasing that density? That's it, that was their question.
Okay. Last call. I'm not seeing anyone putting up their hands. We will close this public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for your participation this evening, and we'll take a five, let's take a 10-minute recess. See you back here at seven, we'll switch chairs for our...